Hello, welcome to the April 12th on 18 Phoenix City Council meeting. We're going to be reading the order and roll call please.
Councillor Westover?
Here.
Councillor Baker?
Here.
Councillor Snyder?
Present.
Councillor Shunk?
Here.
Mayor Les?
Here.
Right, let's leave these.
I bow to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
You guys want to present a few things?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I have public comments, like you get the board. Well, we've heard a lot of comments on Church Street, but first we're gonna get public comments. I think they're not on the agenda. Carolina, are you going to Church Street or? Okay, come on. Out, go out. By the way, before you start, I hear that we are losing our institutional hash here over at Raze, one of our competitors.
What?
Pretty soon. You want to tell us about that and why you're leaving? I think it begins probably. Are you gonna be missed?
Yeah, my name is Carolina Marshall, I live at 142 West Falls Road here in Phoenix. And yeah, I had my first day today at Food for Less. It was awesome. Uh, it's amazing. Uh, I just can't even say any good things about it. I had a great time, saw my old friend Dak, he came and gave me a nice welcome and, um, yeah, and more money, more hours, and a great community liaison. So, yeah, I'm really excited and Brian from Raze has assured me that still can put cans in the check stands and gonna help with the Access Fresh Alliance, so, yeah. So if you want to see, you're gonna have to go to the dinner. Or I'll participate in a kind of walk party that happens. Anyway, so I'm here to announce that April 12th is our next community dinner. We're gonna be having a roasted pork spaghetti. I don't know what that is, but I don't care because Freddie, as he likes to be called now, Alfred our chef wants to be called Freddie, F-R-E-D-D-Y. Anyway, so I'm really excited about that dessert to be announced, probably a mixed vegetable of some kind. And, and, uh, the, starting on Thursday, that's my last day at Raze, we're gonna switch the cans over to the Phoenix High School Draw Line. That's what we went through, changing the candidate raise, it'll go to Phoenix High School Draw Line. But they don't have an advisor anymore, so it's volunteers that are running it, so we're gonna help support them and I'm really excited about that. And, uh, I just wanted to say a little something about the Easter egg, and I'm probably sure someone will talk about that later, but they love that the kids come in after they're there and their faces are painted and they're happy, although a lot of them are crying because they've had a lot of candy or whatever, but it's really cute and it's, people love it. They love that local flagry, rural-y event, and it's very well received. And I really did, I had the posters there and collected and told people about it and it was really great. And, um, I just loved that little, that little event in the dark days, it's just really wonderful.
And last show?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and a beautiful day, I'm waking this getting ordered today. So, um, I just got done working for eight hours and I'm gonna put in forty-eight hours this week, so I'm gonna go to the hot springs.
Enjoy.
See you guys later, thank you for everything you do, all of you. Somewhere. And Church Street.
Next up on the agenda is, I find public hearing regarding Resolution Number 1012, a resolution of the City of Phoenix adopting supplemental budgets and making appropriations. Let's turn over to Dave Kanter, interesting answer, speaking of this.
It's a pretty straightforward item, you're aware that the city borrowed a little over one and a half million dollars, uh, in, as part of a, you know, sort of renewal agency. However, money is not in the city budget, uh, so you need to do this supplemental budget to account both for the loan proceeds and for the debt service, um, that technically the city will pay, although Pura will repay the city for that debt service under the IGDA. So, pretty straightforward matter, the total effect on the budget, um, is one million five-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. You do need to hold a hearing before you can adopt supplemental budget.
Okay, I'm gonna hold a public hearing, have a discussion. All those wishing to speak in favor of Resolution Number 1012, please do so. Anybody wishing to speak against Resolution Number 1012? Without those of public hearing? Discussion council? During now, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 1012, adopting supplemental budget and making appropriations.
I'll second. More discussion? Roll call please.
Councillor Shunk?
Yes.
Councillor Snyder?
Yes.
Councillor Westover?
Yeah.
Councillor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Les, sorry, I'm here.
I'm gonna go to your council meetings, uh, what's your time? Next up is the consent agenda, we have three things on the consent agenda, approval for higher, higher part-time county clerk, uh, court clerk. And second item is a rare, just being helped, just an application that we can submit to help us find some, help us with the civic center and then a council law update and strategic action plan. Anyone want to pour anything from the consent agenda forward, for the discussion? I'm watching a motion.
I'm just for privilege of the consent agenda.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none, consent agenda approved. Next item, I'm gonna move one item, pop, move one item to come to new business, nine B, Resolution Number 1011, Resolution approving the master fees and charges schedule, this week, stuff eighteen and nineteen, I'm gonna have, let me go up now, anyone take one here?
Well, I'd actually like to have, I'd like to have Jeanette come up and present this. I, I will say, while Jeanette's coming up, that the, the master fees and charges schedule has much more transparency and some information than anything else, so, you go to our website, you want to know what the fees are for something the city does, it's all located in one place and you can find the information there. There's actually very little in the fee schedule with this new or increase, but all that genetic rest.
Okay, yeah, this is what we, um, addressed last year, we brought a master fee schedule for the first time last year and this is the first update to it. We have, the only thing that's different that would normally start July 1 would be the increase in water service fees, as discussed at the previous council meeting, um, where we normally do a 1.5% increase to the base rate in each year every May, and instead of the normal increase, it's going up to 3.1 due to the state for water commission increase. And then, um, we have the addition of the civic center, civic center fees this time, and that's on page seven of the document, if you'd like to check out those fees, and it's page forty-seven of the packet. And then, um, the building permit fees, there were some incorrect last time, and then there's, across the board, they were revised and updated. There's gonna need to be a ordinance presented to you before that, provided that the ordinance has adopted those fees will go into effect July 1 as well.
There's, I made another thing that I'd like to add to what Jeanette was saying, and that is, um, when I was here during my first tenure, as your interim city manager, uh, I had a couple of requests to waive certain fees and your Phoenix City Code is totally silent on fee waivers. And as a result, it, it left us kind of a limbo and, and the situation dealt with, you may recall, when we changed the due date for water bills last year, and as we tried very hard to let everybody in the city know, a lot of people didn't get the message, a lot of people came in late payments, they were very angry about it because the, I guess they didn't see the door hanger warning the due date change. And I went ahead and waived those late fees, even though there is absolutely nothing in the code that addresses fee waivers. So, what I did, you can see on page three of the, page forty-two in PDF file, I, I drafted a fee waiver policy and it basically says, look, City of Phoenix does not waive fees purely, but we will waive certain late fees in certain clearly defined situations, which I spelled out in this fee waiver policy. And what I would suggest to you in the future is that if someone were to come to the city and say, hey, you know, I've got this community group and we're doing such and such and you have to pay this fee, we want you to waive the fee, I think the answer should be no, but why don't you apply for a community grant? And, and then you can use the grant to, to pay your fees. Or the council can simply say, well, we're not gonna waive the fee, but we'll give a budget transfer from somebody who cares, who's likely to cover the cost of your fees. But I, I think it's, based on my experience and what I've seen over the course of three decades in business, it's a really bad idea to start waiving fees. It's a, it's a slippery slope and you go down that slope fast.
Anything else?
I don't have anything to add, do you have any questions?
I'm just hoping we have some flexibility as the year goes by, and we're working with the civic center, could we be the place that we can change fees if need be over time, right?
Yes, and if we wanted to do that, we would.
Go online, yes.
Correct, we would bring it before council, um, during that budget year.
Councillor Baker?
I was just curious, where you got your model for the, for the fees you're proposing here, for the civic center?
For the civic center, um, from my understanding, Kimberlin did some research for us at several other cities that have something similar to what we're gonna have.
Great. What else? Councillor Snyder?
I just have one thing I can bring up as a tentative objection for the way you're speaking. Uh, paragraph five, garage sale permit fee is one dollar. I know it's in fine within the charter, so there's nothing we can do about it tonight. But I would ask if the council would permit, to have our illustrious staff, go back and review that particular requirement, find out why it's in there and whether or not it should go forward or should be removed. Because in my view, it's one of those things that breaks my first rule, and it never make a law that you're not going to enforce, and this one is not being enforced.
Good story, yes.
So, that's my comment for tonight, but enough. Everyone would agree that we should have the research done, that's the one that should remain in the charter.
I agree.
It's, it's actually correct, it's in the code, not in our, and there are people, in fact, who do come in and pay that fee. How many, how many garage permit fees did we issue last year, would you guess?
Um, usually fifteen.
So, there's a lot more to the garage sale, but it's not accurate to say nobody pays the fee.
They almost nobody pays.
Just a quick answer for Dan, um, the fee waiver policy, um, what is, so this is, what is the process for changing a policy? So say that we adopted a policy in the future that did, for some reason, offer like a fee departure or fee waivers, like, for example, as, um, like developer incentives for, um, different kinds of housing that many communities have done, um, would that be something that the city would have to change a policy in order to do that?
You, well, you would definitely want to adopt a policy.
We, we have to adopt a policy if we wanted to do that, but how will we do that if we have conflicting policies?
Well, you bear in mind that, that the, the whole master fee schedule, including the fee waiver, is part of the resolution that you're adopting. So, i- if you were to do the type of developer incentives that you're talking about, you would presumably either be adopting an ordinance or adopting another resolution, and that resolution could simply include language stating that it supersedes the fee waiver policy contained, uh, in Resolution 1011.
Thank you.
More discussion, council? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 101, updating the master fees and charges scheduled for the City of Phoenix.
Second, more discussion? Roll call please.
Councillor Baker?
Yes.
Councillor Shunk?
Yes.
Councillor Snyder?
Yes.
Councillor Westover?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Jeanette, enjoy the rest of your evening. We want to get around here, real, probably get that. Next up is gonna be number eight, discussion.
Will we supposed to open that last one to the public?
Uh, no.
No.
Without a public hearing, right?
That was not a public hearing.
That's fine. Uh, next up, number eight, discussion of the planning commission, approval of no Church Street variance. I was, I was kind of last council meeting, we had our planning commission, our head of planning commission come and talk under the public comments and engage in discussion regarding that particular issue, the council side to agenda items, this item for this evening. This doesn't mean that we're gonna make a change to what happened on Church Street. I mean, a lot of Church Street residents are a little concerned, a lot of the lay of fears with me, we're going to change to the Church Street, we're going to just talk about this night and discuss it, and I'm going to first turn over Dave Kanter to talk a little about it, our attorney's gonna talk a little bit about it, just go over the process, what it was, how it happened, why it wasn't correct, and we're gonna go to him now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the first thing I want to emphasize is, to you, the mayor, to you councillors, and the city agenda report, you must limit your discussion of this issue only to the question, the request to withdraw the city's application and nothing else. The appeal period is still open through the end of the day tomorrow, so since you are the appeal body, I anticipate an appeal, but you cannot discuss the merits of the application, you can only discuss the request to withdraw the application if you're not wanting to do that. So you will recall, for those of you who are here, at your last council meeting, your planning commission chair, Mickey Summerhayes, came forward and expressed some concerns about the process that was used by the city, um, to seek a variance for the Church Street design, um, and she also had a separate conversation with me and Mayor, and just talked to our public works director, and she basically expressed concern that the, uh, the process that the city used to, um, to select the design and then limit the planning commission discussion to a yes or no vote on the variance and not allow the planning commission to come up with its own design recommendation was improper and that the planning commission should get a do-over. And she also expressed to the mayor, and I wish to talk to us, that she had talked to DLCD and DLCD had agreed that the process was improper.
What's the DLCD?
That's Department of Land Conservation Development. I, I talked to DLCD's regional representative and I wrote down exactly what he said, so I could quote him verbatim, and he said, "It is not unusual for cities to do this, cities do this all the time, the process you went through is justified." Those were his exact words.
Give me one more time, DLCD, it's important.
The Department of Land Conservation and Development is a state agency that is responsible for overseeing all land use planning of the state and ensuring that, uh, cities and counties, adopt and follow their comprehensive plans, and they are also staffed to the Land Conservation and Development Commission and to the Land Use Board of Appeals, which is where an appeal of a land use action would go, afterward goes to the city council. So...
And you said what again? I just, I'm just wanting to give some point, point of the train.
Not unusual for cities to do this, cities do this all the time, process you went through is justified. So, um, the, uh, the, the chair, Mr. Summerhayes, expressed concern that the planning commission, rather than the council selecting a design from own competing options and then requesting a variance from the planning commission, the council should have allowed the planning commission to select the design, make a recommendation to the council, and the council could then have applied for variance. But the problem with, with doing that is the, uh, the planning commission would then be voting on its own recommendation, which they can't do, the planning, the planning commission would have to refuse itself from, from that vote, uh, because the, at the meeting at which they reviewed the design options and made the recommendation would have amounted to ex parte contact, um, regarding this application for variance, so that, that process wouldn't work. The, uh, it's my understanding that she also had a conversation with Public Works Director of Radio X Quality in which she said, well, uh, the city could just withdraw the application and then re-submit the application as a conditional use permit. If I'm not quoting, I'm sure we'll hear about that, but, um, you, you can't do that either, or code does not allow for this to be processed as a conditional use permit, it only allows for it to be processed as a variance. And I think your staff might agree that, you know, maybe we should rewrite the code so it can be processed as a conditional use permit, but the way the code is written right now, it can't, there was no way to do this other than by seeking the variance. I, I think, bottom line, um, and I, I think our attorney will back me up on this, we believe that the process the city followed was entirely appropriate and perfectly legal, uh, and the planning commission voted five to one to approve that variance and our staff recommendation is that we not withdraw the application. We are up against a time crunch at this point to get the project done during the upcoming construction season, and we really would like to get started on it as soon as possible.
And you're gonna have Doug say the key words also, or?
Well, to confirm me, since you said, you don't know how else.
No city attorney.
Yeah, as a city attorney, I don't know how else you would bring a matter like this before your planning commission unless it's the applicant, which would be the City of that, excuse me, the City of Phoenix, which owns the roads, can't be any next-door neighbors, can't be anyone else, it's gotta be the city council, you know, it has to be a decision by the city, you are the ultimate decision-maker in terms of what you want to happen, if you, or like any developer or any other owner of property, if you want to develop it, you're the applicant, so I don't see how anyone else could, could stand in your place or stand in the city's place. Fact that it then goes through a process, um, and as long as no one is, is got a conflict of interest, and that's been expressed and stated publicly, that there is no, assuming there was, I didn't see anything, I was looking at minutes, there wasn't any, uh, conflict of interest, uh, they make a decision, and that decision was based on, uh, a staff report that described all of the elements that were required under the, under the ordinance, and how to do variance, and that's true, you can't do a conditional use to admit it, it is stated specifically under the, under the transportation code that it's, that these, uh, any kind of variance from, or any kind of change from this, the transportation plan has to be done by variance, and that was what was considered, those criteria for variance was considered, and I don't know what else. I don't know else you would, how else you would have done it, so, or how else it would have been done. And it's so far been done correctly, in your opinion, we did a correct thing?
Yes, okay, thank you. So, I'm gonna open up to hear from the public, and I'm gonna open up to hear from...
Can I make a statement first?
I'm gonna open up to hear from Mickey first, they're gonna talk first, okay? And then we're gonna hear from others, and then we're gonna open up to council discussion, and Mickey, why don't you come on, I'm gonna give you, instead of three, I'm gonna give you five, okay?
Okay. It won't take me very long.
Before I start, Mr. Mayor, just a quick question on process, um, the, uh, so we should probably limit testimony to process as well, so what we hear from the public shouldn't get into, um, the actual details of the...
I, I'm not, I'm not talking about anything with, for the rest of the...
Mickey, I don't know if we can, you know, what they say, but I think maybe they can, maybe you can just, you can, if they start straying off to areas that, that Sarah was talking about, then, uh, then that's... So, we mean public discussion, just a process also.
Yeah.
Like to the planning commission members, but everyone. Okay, that's fine. Okay, that's great, that's fine with me, that's helping out.
Well, I kind of wish I'd got to... Speak first, because they would have believed you, you'd love it.
That's okay.
Mickey Summerhayes?
Yeah.
And I, I am here as chairman of the planning commission, because this, this is what I'm, I'm trying to do, and everything that was just discussed, I agree with it, because I did a lot of research, I did talk to a lot of people, I talked to Evan about it being a conditional use, I talked to other people, and I, I think that we're the best in the city, we do revisit that it's not a variance and it becomes a conditional use, because the variance is a much stiffer criteria than the conditional use is, to, to meet, to, to make a, a change like this. So, I think in the future, it probably shouldn't be a variance, because that's one of the problems with this, is the criteria, and where I have a problem is, and, and this, this problem is my fault, part of it's Evan's fault, that our city planner, and, and what, what ended up happening is, the motion was stated, and the second was stated, and I failed, this is my failure, I want you to understand this, I failed to make us go through every one of the criteria, line by line by line, and show where we met the criteria. And I cannot do that, we did not do that, we need to re, we need to reprocess the motion and change the motion to state all the criteria and how these changes meet it, because the, the transportation element requires that, that there be offset, if you're going to do something here, you have to offset it here, because you need to keep it as close to the DSP as you can.
Okay.
You have something, Dave?
Uh, I, I, I was concerned that you're straying into the merits of the application rather than the question for the decision.
No, I, what my problem is, is we did not meet the criteria, we did not state it.
Now, 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 now...
We didn't state it, I'm not saying we didn't meet it.
Okay. And Mickey, when you said stop, we just gotta stop, make sure we get the question out, you correctly, you don't make a mistake. So, you're saying, like you're talking about the criteria, this is strange.
Yeah, but I'm not...
In my opinion, she's talking about whether the application met the criteria, and, and you can't discuss that.
And we should be talking, we should be talking about whether the city should, um, hold...
It may have met it, it may not have met it, we just didn't state it and put it in there like we have, I've been here twenty-plus years and we have always, here's the criteria, here's where it meets this, here's where it meets this, here's where it meets this, here's where it meets it, and it is required to meet all of those items, there's one, two, three, four, five, six of them. And, and it's required to meet it and it's not stated, so if somebody wants to, I don't know, try to object to any of this, I think they have grounds, because we didn't state that we met those. And you're, you're the attorney...
I know, that's, we, that's from, from there, I mean, you've made your, you've made your point, so at that point, uh...
Well, I would, I would ask that you let us go back and, and do the, do the paperwork correctly. I, I just ask that you do that, because I really feel a disservice to the city and the people of Phoenix, they did, they deserve, these are your streets, all of the streets, all of the streets, they're everybody's streets, and they, they deserve to have it done right.
I appreciate it.
I apologize for not, not saying, no, Jason, you really need to go through each one of these, and...
I appreciate your passion, twenty-three years of planning commission, that's, you know, a great volunteer, appreciate it.
I love this city. I love this city, and I, I want it to stay the wonderful city of this.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Tony Chavez wanted to speak on this issue, and I've only got Tony signed up, will you want to speak on this, or somebody else want to speak up on the issue, just raise your hand, I'm... Somebody else wants to speak up on the issue, just raise your hand. Just step in my way, okay?
Tony Chavez, two ten, West Church. Up to this point, the city and the community have not always seen eye to eye on a lot of things, and I think everybody can agree to that. And in my experience in history with this, this event started off really stressful for everybody. And the community was stressed out. They came together, the council came together, and we worked, I think, as a team, and we came up with something that was very cohesive, something that appeased both sides. And I've never seen the council work with the community and genuinely hear what they'd said ever before, like they did on this topic. And thank you guys for that. This is probably the most cohesive council I've ever seen up here that worked for the best of all. Through that, we all left here feeling very good. I think everybody on Church Street left here feeling very good when we finally got through this. And then we get this letter, and I don't know about other people, but all that stress came back to me. All the stress that we went through came back to me when we got that letter saying that they wanted to pull this and restart over. If there is a procedural problem, which from my understanding, everything was done correctly to the best of everybody's knowledge. If there's a procedural problem, and you guys want to work it out after the fact, work it out after the fact, but don't use our stress and our street to figure that out. Figure it out for the next project, and let's move on. I think we've all earned the right to be comfortable with this. And even if we, if this goes through and we continue on, we still have this stress of revisiting this again. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Jack McRaven, four zero, five hundred and thirty. I'm confused. I'm confused as to what is really being presented with this, the difference between the variance and the, you know, I don't know all the legal. But as a citizen and as a resident on Church Street, we've worked really hard to express to the council and to the planning commission. And I felt like if there were things going astray or wrong in the process, that it should have been brought up before this moment. When we had the trial with the planning commission, everything seemed smooth and straight, and the same thing, you know, that Tony said. It's extremely stressful. We all thought, okay, if it was just an appeal, then we know where to go. But with this, it's very confusing, as just, you know, somebody who doesn't know the language. So maybe some clarification a little bit for those of us who don't know that way would be fantastic. But I think it would be really sad for us to start all over again.
Thank you. Crystal, is my comment?
Thank you. Chris Peterson, one twenty-five, Tracy Lane.
Thanks.
I was the only planning commission that voted no to the variance, and I stand by.
And we're not gonna talk about why you voted no on variance, just the process? We should pull it off, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
The process, I don't believe was done correctly either. And I would like to revisit it, because the long run is, we need to do what's right for the city in the long run, not just now, but fifty years from now. This is a big deal. So that's about all I can say. Thank you.
I think I understand what happened. They didn't talk enough about, a lot about the criteria.
Yes.
Mark the S, one ten-four street. They just didn't discuss enough about the criteria and go over them in detail. I'm assuming that they read them. I did. I thought the city did an excellent job. Evan, I'm pretty sure prepared that document addressing those criteria. So I would request that the council consider that unless you think the criteria don't apply, let's not open this Pandora's box, because there's no reason to go back and redo it if you believe the ultimate decision was correct. If you feel like the criteria were not met and that there wasn't enough discussion, that would be a different story. But the vote was, I don't even really understand process-wise, how Mickey could represent the planning commission and come to the city council. I mean, does the entire planning commission vote and ask her to come and do this? Did she do this on her own, did she do this with one or, you know? I don't understand that process, but I think that the decision's correct, and I think the criteria were met, and I think that this application for pulling the variance request should be denied. Thank you.
Anybody else? One more. We're just on process, okay?
Yeah. Jason Couch, one one seven West Hurst Street, and I am vice chairman of the Phoenix Planning Commission. First of all, I want to honor Mickey too, for twenty-seven years of service. And sitting at the opposite end of her like I do, and having some alternative ideas, I'm proud that she is a stickler for the rules, and I trust her judgment. However, we are volunteers. We are laymen in the law. So I have a general idea of where this, specifically her issue, came up with this. And like I said, I trust Mickey's judgment. However, I also trust the judgment more so of trained professionals. I couldn't be, I was scared to death when we lost Matt. But Evan, top-notch fellow, he seems to know his stuff. He's communicative, he explains things. I can't tell you how many times I've walked that block and have him say, "Evan, I don't understand this, so what can you tell me about this?" So again, I want to honor Mickey for her years of service, and I really, really respect her depth of knowledge. But in my opinion, every person on there, whether we're layman or not, we're literate, or we would not be appointed to the planning commission. And everything was written down. And I believe, in my estimation, that everything that needed to be discussed was discussed. We work a little less intensely rule-wise when we're having our discussions, but anyone on planning commission at any time knows that if they want to talk about something specific, then Mickey's real good about not gathering me out, for the most part, not always, but for the most part. So had anyone had any of those specific things that was an issue, like Krista did, they bring it up, we talk about it, Mickey calls for a motion. A motion was made, no one seconded it. The other motion, and I read the motion directly from Evan's notes, because I trust that trained professional. I read it out exactly, a vote was taken, was five to one. So I was equally surprised that Mickey had started this. But Mickey's gonna do what she feels is right in her heart. But what is right for our community and what is right lawfully is often not for laymen, but for trained professionals. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna call it discussion now, we don't have no more comments from the audience, okay? We're gonna let council do their thing, and. Yes. Go ahead.
I just thought I'd point out one other thing that's very relevant to the council's consideration. The exact language of the motion that was approved is that VAR eighteen, that zero-one be approved based on the information, findings, and conclusions set forth above without amendment. The findings that they approved are the findings that the request for variance meets the criteria. So the planning commission has already voted that the request for variance met the criteria, even though they did not have a line-by-line discussion of each of the criteria. So the question of whether the planning commission approved the criteria is really not at issue. What's at issue is whether the planning commission discussed each criteria individually. That is not a legal requirement in advance of the vote.
Now, we shouldn't even be here talking about this particular issue. We gotta be careful about what we agendize. I mean, we agendize this because we don't have a discussion, don't have a public comment about some issues, so we agendize this issue. I don't, in the future, it may be a good learning point for us. I don't think we should even have agendized this particular issue, because it does open up a whole ball of wax. That's number one. Number two, I see no reason why we need to go back and revisit and pull this from the planning commission and do a do-over. Just don't want to go there, but with that said, I'm gonna... You don't have to comment, but Terry, you want to comment on the way down line?
Yeah, I'll comment. And I appreciate the chairman, the chairwoman's service to the city. I love the city team, I appreciate it. I really feel like we did everything we could to do it as good as we could do it. We went door to door, we had people come, I don't know how many people came up and spoke, meeting after meeting. I was actually trying to get the road a little narrower. I think we should do it the way it is, and I don't think we should revisit it. I understand why we may want to make adjustments for future, but everything was done legally, it was done above board, absolutely transparent. There's nothing hidden in the shadows here. And I think that given those facts, that we should move forward as we've already planned.
Counselor Schon, do you want to comment?
Just a little bit. I think sticklers are important. We love Jim. His line-up views of things are amazing. I mean, how important is a comment, it really is in some instances, right? But it sounds like the process was completely legal, it was very transparent, there was a lot of sunshine on it, and correct. Tall residents of Church Street, sorry to pull up the stress of worry again, I know that's a lot. Because it's a lot, and there's enough stresses in life where we need to have to battle with. I can't speak for the council, but it was a big surprise for me. And I want to get the construction process started as soon as possible to hit the construction season. I also, Dave mentioned last time we don't have a call-up provision, and I'm wondering if we should agendize a discussion on call-up provision in the future. Just to have that out there. That's fine, we can do that. Because that came out before once or twice, I think, to a call-up provision, right?
I can't remember coming up. It's something I mentioned to the council.
You mentioned it. I listened, Dave. I listened. In my notes. That's it.
Rest. Thank you. Counselor Schneider, you want to comment? You don't have to, but if you'd like to.
Okay. It seems to me that the planning commission got a little loose in the viewpoint of some of the folks on the commission. So I just encourage in the future to think about what you're going to do before you actually do it, and make sure the structure is there and everybody agrees to it, and then just go through point by point, and whatever falls out of the bottom, falls out of the bottom. So I think my encouragement would just be a little bit more fine-tuning and tightening with the process to make sure it works well before we come forward with anything. That's all.
Also, let's go.
I'd just say very briefly that it does sound like, I appreciate all of the planning commission members and all the citizens who are here today. And it does sound like adequate processes. And, but I do appreciate process conversations, I think they're very important. I think it's important for people's understanding and to build cohesion and community, so I'm glad we had this conversation. But it does sound to me like the application was submitted properly to the planning commission. I think you think that we should move forward. But I just want to say thank you to everyone in the room. I appreciate all of your comments and viewpoints.
So from what I'm hearing, let's say we have consensus to not withdraw the application. Anybody feel differently? Okay. With that, so we have a consensus not to withdraw the application, now we're gonna close this discussion. Thank you. So nothing changed.
Thank you for listening to me, because I think it was important.
Yeah, we appreciate you. Next up for discussion is item nine A, discussion of chronic nuisance property ordinance. Okay? Pretty topical, and I'm gonna ask Dave and maybe Steve Turner to comment on it before we go into their discussion, maybe they'll use their ordinance over in Medford. See what you want to take away.
Sure. So this arose actually from a conversation that Doug and I, each chief in the town price, and the folks who are dealing with what could fairly be described as a nuisance property on Orchard Place. I understand from the mayor that this is not the only nuisance property we have in the city, that there are several places where similar situations are occurring throughout town. And it, we had a conversation following this meeting with the Orchard Place neighbors about the merits of the city having a chronic nuisance ordinance. And I mentioned it to the council in a subsequent meeting, and was asked to come back to agendize a discussion and show you what a chronic nuisance ordinance looks like. There are a number of cities in the locality and actually throughout the state that have adopted chronic nuisance ordinances. They're all mostly the same. So instead of giving five or six different chronic nuisance ordinances, I showed you in a packet just Medford's, which, I don't know if Medford was the first, but theirs seems to be the most comprehensive and maybe the template that other cities follow. And truthfully, I would say that a chronic nuisance property ordinance is another tool in the toolbox for dealing with a property that, where there are repeated code violations, where there is repeated criminal activity. And you have to prove the criminal activity, you can't just suspect. And it's a way to force a property owner to take action or to seek additional or expedited sanctions against this property. And in terms of the features, you might discuss the specific features of what you typically see in a chronic nuisance property ordinance.
Sure. If reading, for instance, Medford product nuisance, you can see how it's laid out, and as Dave said, that there are other chronic nuisances, nuisance ordinances throughout the state. And they, this one is, I would say is robust. I mean, it's got a lot of work in it. And if you recall, when we were doing the model rules for purchasing, I look at the city of Phoenix a lot differently than I would look, for instance, at the city of Ashland or city of Medford, that has code violation, code enforcement officers, have, you know, law enforcement staff of a very large amount, ones that can follow up, they go through all the procedures that would be necessary. So I look at this, and I'd say, okay, I recognize it as one. But it would be one where you kind of have, I also kind of look at it also, chronic nuisances as more, suppose a shotgun approach, try to do it more as opposed to the bullet approach. Find out what really are the issues that your city police are having problems with. So if it's a neighborhood that's having a specific issue with a group or with a type of nuisance, whether it's, this place always seems to have RVs on it, or this one always has, you know, these kinds of problems, start defining what you're...
this one always has, you know, these kinds of problems, start defining what your problems are in your city. So then that would take some little bit of work to hone down so that you're just not doing, like I said, the shotgun approach. So you're actually finding those, those ones that are most important. Then, then, you know, then it's the PO process. You've got a chief of police deciding, you know, what a plan's gonna look like. I would like to be able to get some controls around that as well, but it can be done, I think, so that, so that you're, you have some criteria, you know, you have some criteria, you utilize it as opposed to, well, I just really think, you know, you need to stop doing this, you need to stop doing that kind of stuff. It's kind of like, well, how are you making those decisions? And how are you making, you know, decisions on a plan if you're gonna actually stop this activity from happening? So, so trying to kind of get this from becoming too dense and resource intensive in terms of what you expect our city police to do, or what our neighborhood would expect the city police to do, if they see a, a problem, try to get it down or hone it down. I think, you know, a ordinance can be done correctly, and it can be done kind of in a, like I said, more like in a bullet approach, where you're really kind of dealing with one problem. If you start adding more, you can add more to your, to your nuisance ordinance, but to the extent of, of, of trying to make it so that it's narrow enough so that you're not overriding someone's rights in their property. Because again, this is a property ordinance, and it does deal with people's, either their livelihood, which could be their rental, or it could also be someone's home, actual house that they own, and now the city is telling them what they can do, what they can't do. And so those are kinds of things, obviously, that would be the questions I would be looking at in this ordinance, but this is a good start in terms of what you'd be looking at, kind of the realm, what you're look, of what you're doing and what you're legislating against. And it's, you know, it'll take a little time. I mean, I'm, I know, I mean, I gotta, it's, it's, I know for some, it's a kind of urgent issue right at the moment, but, but I think, you know, putting something like this together takes a little bit of head scratching and, and kind of bouncing it off of each other.
Thank you. You have any other comments from staff before we go into public comment?
I just want to point out that my other point, our stickler and chief pointed out to me, the agenda report, I use the word foreclosure on a property. That, that is not accurate. The chronic, the chronic nuisance property ordinance does not allow us to foreclose on a property. It does allow us to close a property and force the residents to vacate for a period of six months to a year. But foreclosure means that we would take ownership of the property. That's not what happens under a chronic nuisance ordinance. And that is, in the worst case scenario, if the remedies section actually provides a very broad range of remedies that would be available to the city, that is the most extreme remedy, and we could not find an example of a city elsewhere that has actually done that.
Yeah, the only, the closest the city of Medford has in terms of, that I see, city of Medford actually against properties that lenders are foreclosing on, and the owners have left, and you end up with these what we call zombie properties, where essentially the, the title owner, the legal owner, has left because they've either gone bankrupt, can't afford to maintain the house anymore, or they've been essentially, they haven't paid their mortgage, so they've left the house, and now you've got a lender sitting there and has no reason to really to put it into its real estate portfolio. So they just leave these houses there for, for years. And I've got, as, I know I'm a private attorney, I counsel some of these people who are getting nailed by city Medford because they come in and say, well, look, you're, you're still the registered owner of this property, or a homeowner's association will be still charging dues against that person who went bankrupt, you know, and, and couldn't afford it, and is not even living there any longer. Yet the bank is still sitting there on those properties waiting, and five years later, seven years later, they get around to actually foreclosing on the property. So what city Medford has done is they've actually made an ordinance, and essentially, see, they've actually done the same thing, which says, your owner, well, if you're a prime lender, you're also owner. And so we will go after the prime lenders to make this, to get your property cleaned up because it's an attractive nuisance or a... And so they've used that, and that has happened, but again, it's a, it's a, it's a labor intensive, you know, resource intensive process.
Really the last resort.
Last resort.
Yeah.
But it does put fear in people when you put the notice up there. I guarantee that a lot of times it starts cleaning things up right away.
One more member of staff wants to talk to you about issues. Ray?
Just as a matter of...
Oh, good. Thank you.
Ray, you're as well at the public works department. Just as a matter of us being able to maintain properties, problematic properties that have code violations, it's not just the activities of the people that live in the houses, it's how they take care of their houses, and it's a constant effort between my, you know, our staff, which is with the police department very commonly, and Tim Muck is a great code enforcement official, but the reality is that we don't always have the ability to rectify situations that are problematic and continually problematic. I think this gives us another venue to find a way to make sure that we make some of these properties, I think, at least in a, in a safe, lawful and helpful manner for the rest of the people that live around them. And it's just really, really hard to do without a little bit of emphasis on code violation, like rectification, which is what I think this has a lot to do with.
Thanks, Ray. There's only one person in the public that's signed up to speak on this particular issue, but once again, we could want to talk about this particular issue, just Ray, Hannah, and Wolf, here, for anyone. And the first off is gonna be, is it Tammy?
Hi, Sammy Ford, Mayor. I'm at five oh eight Orchard Place, so directly across from the House, so I'm gonna do my best to keep where it needs to be. I'm very stressed about this, I'm highly emotional about this, I have three things I can't...
Tammy, I appreciate that. With, with public comment, we just always allow about three minutes for, for comment. Does that cut you off? What everything I say in your...
Well, you probably should anyways, because after three minutes, I'm gonna... I would just say first off, thank you to the city for taking this and bringing this before the council. This is detrimental. I'm in a situation where a home has over sixty calls to it in the last six months, and there is nothing that can be done. These are not brand new drug dealers. These are criminals, drug dealers, that make a living out of getting around the police department and the city of Phoenix. I'm in a recourse that I have nothing. I don't have the protection of the city or the police department, I don't have the protection of my neighborhood any longer. And my thought is, if we want new businesses to come in and build in our community and be a part of our community, how can they do that when I'm less than a thousand feet from a school and I don't... I can't let my kid down. It's to the point where my husband says to me tonight, why don't I contact the city council and the city mayor every time I have a problem? Every time those people give me a problem in my home, why don't I contact them? So that at one o'clock in the morning, you're getting a phone call. At two thirty in the morning, you're getting a phone call. At three o'clock in the morning, we're showing up at your house so that you can know what it feels like to live across from this home. So I would love the city of Phoenix to take it seriously about a nuisance ordinance. I think that people like the city of Medford and city of Ashland have already laid it out for us. All we have to do is adopt it. But it's a situation where if we don't start taking a look at it and doing something to adopt it, it's not gonna magically get better. The next home that's gonna move into is next to one of you guys, next to you, next to you, and you're gonna be dealing with the same thing that we're dealing with. And again, these are not brand new drug dealers. These are hardened criminals that get in and out of jail, their name alone strikes fear in anybody that we talk to, and I have to live across from them, from them with my children, and I have no recourse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Tammy, we, we hear you.
Thank you. I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm lit.
I'm not talking to anything.
Yeah.
What's your name?
My name is Sue McMillan, and I live at five oh, five fifteen Orchard Place. And you might recognize me from being on Channel Twelve, because after the last council meeting, I didn't feel like our issues were heard, and so I had someone come over and, and I put it out there. Do you remember that?
I do.
Okay, that's me.
All right, I love who you are, Sue.
All right.
And we'll listen.
Okay, thank you. This five oh nine is right next to me. I moved back in July. I've had this home since oh five, and I was out of the state due to some family issues. Back, I'm back here again. Had I known that this was going on, I would have sold the house. I'm in, I was in California visiting family. I cut my visit short because I wanted to come to this council meeting to hear about this ordinance that you are already be talking about, and I'm really encouraging you to follow through on that. We did meet with the city attorney and, and the city manager and the chief of police, and I think there was one more person there, and they're, they're frustrated, just like we are, because their hands are tied. And every time we call and there's an issue, we see a drug activity going on, by the time the police get there, these, these people are like rats. They run into that house so fast, and so naturally, they're not gonna answer the door because they, they know how to get around all of this. These are like Tammy was saying, they know what they're doing.
That's from the girls.
That's from the girls?
Yeah.
Do you want to read it?
Oh, I'm not prepared to read it, or you can.
You, this is from your girls.
Yeah.
Well, you can, you can, you can, you can, go ahead and read that, we'll give you another minute to read it if you like.
Pardon?
We'll give you another minute to read that if you like.
Okay. Hello, this is one of the many kids from Orchard Place, and my friends are writing this because we would like to talk about five oh nine. Now we cannot play in the road at all, we also cannot play past five o'clock. We had to adopt to these conditions because there was not another choice. We are scared of the many pitfalls they have and do not feel safe. They have run over many of the caution kids at play signs and have lied. There has been yelling and hollering very late at night. Now we do not have the rights to be happy and feel safe in our own neighborhood. And this is signed from the many kids who are concerned to the city council. Things that we cannot do anymore. Play hide and seek at night, that's joyful noise to me. Joyful noise of having children playing outside instead of in their home, on their devices, okay? That's a joyful thing for me, that I love when I move to that neighborhood. You play hide and seek at night, play kickball without the fear of the ball going in their yard. Can't do lemonade stands without the fear of them walking up to it. Their cat has been... Ah, terrifying. Other neighborhood...
They're eating their stuff.
And we cannot run laps around the cul-de-sac. There is so much more we can no longer do, trust me. I'm gonna leave this with you, because I want it to go into the record. Okay? All right. We're gonna do every, we're gonna work with you and get this, there has to be some resolution on this.
I appreciate you, Sue, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Chris, you want to talk? Antonio, I'll pick you next, okay?
Chris Peterson, on Twenty-Five Place Lane. I do not have a property on Orchard Place, but I have a property on the corner of C Street and Maple, and I also have a nuisance neighbor, which has me a little concerned about Orchard High, brand new duplex in my building. There's people coming in and out of there all day, and I've heard the neighbors live down there all night. They don't have jobs, they're always there, and they are pretty frightening looking. So I think if you adopt a nuisance control, and I'm working with Tim Muck, and he's done great, but I just, you know, if we don't do something, it's just gonna keep hitting our neighborhoods, because those people are in Phoenix. And if we don't fight back against them, I think they're gonna just keep coming. So I'm all in support of this. And I'm not even a mom. They're around, they're everywhere.
We have a similar issue on, on Second Street, and we've had many, you know, we've had to have people no trust house from the information center by the shop, you know, repeatedly. And the, the corner apartment on, on Second Street is, it's, it's not as bad as, as your guys' and, and I'm thankful for that, but, you know, same thing, people all hours of the night. You know, now it's getting to the point where whenever my wife walks to work and they're outside, they try to converse with her and approach her, she doesn't feel okay about it. When she doesn't feel okay, I definitely don't feel okay. You know, we, we do what we can do to contribute to this community. You know, I heard the church was violated last week by somebody. If, if somebody feels that much disregard that they're gonna violate the church, they're not gonna give a second thought to a house, a person. As it goes now, whenever we leave town, we borrow a car to put in our driveway. Because they, they have a straight view of our driveway. You know, we don't even feel safe leaving. The last few times we've been out of town, the same day we came back, there was violent outbursts, screaming, yelling at those apartments. I was out of town a week and a half ago, and my wife said the same thing. You know, I believe, you know, we've talked with Lieutenant Price, we just lost Officer Holland, and I feel really bad about that because he was one who was out there, knew people were, and wasn't afraid to be not friendly.
He's back, by the way.
Is he?
He's in the room. Yay!
Paul came back.
Yay!
Paul, Paul came back. He lost all.
Oh. Me too.
You know, and I've had conversations with Lieutenant Price, and he says the same thing, unless, our hands are really limited until, unless we catch and move something illegal. You know, right now, this problem is a manageable problem if we get control over it. If it continues to the point where it is Medford and other cities, it, all we're gonna be able to do is daily triage. I don't want to live in a town that, that all we can do is just put a band-aid over something, we get another problem, you know? They do this stuff because they feel comfortable.
That's right.
If we make them feel uncomfortable, they'll, they won't come here anymore. It's a tight community, they'll tell each other, hey, don't go there. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Martha Hess, Wenton Fourth Street. Luckily, my problem went away, but I live across the street from the house that butts up to the parking lot, that is the Purple Parrot, and I blame Netflix for that because there used to be a great DVD store there, but when Netflix video store went out of business, on Purple Parrot brought all kinds of characters. That house was awful, and there were not the firearms that you talked about, but the constants, which appeared to be drug deals going on, and, and clearly the president was on something that kept him up all hours of the night, knowing... And I did try to work with the police officers to try to give them some kind of probable cause when there was a potential domestic assault, and when it appears to me there were people living there anyhow, and I gave notice to the police of that, and eventually he, he did get arrested and taken away and finally get owner of the house, it's an on boarding it up. That's sad, because I'd like to see that one, have something nice done with it too. So, you know, I just want to second what everyone's saying, that it's time to figure out what to do about this, and if an ordinance is the stuff that will help that, then the time seems like...
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Just a question?
Okay. You want to allow...
I just don't know if I have any type of, basically, we have a Facebook page where we load up everything that happens. I don't know who I could share that with, if that makes a difference to anybody, that's all I'd like to say.
May I just talk to the police department about everything that's happening on that? Anybody else to wait for the council discussion?
I just want to question, how is this gonna go forward?
We're gonna see you in just a few minutes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So we're thinking about instructing staff to, want the council, we are considering instructing staff to produce an ordinance, which is somewhat a Medford and other cities throughout the... we are considering instructing staff to produce an ordinance, which is somewhat a metaphor for the city throughout the streets. And we all agree that there are problem homes. And this particular ordinance and ordinance to be, this exercise only in a very, very high threshold. We're not looking to violate property rights. We'll be punitive, we should be punitive. Jump the gun by any means. And we're not going to intentionally, without reason, displace a family. It really is a last resort type of deal. It's all to cheap open days outside and it's all to Lieutenant Price. And they both have the met of an ordinance for, they like, as someone who put it, have another tool in their box to work with. So, and I always look at, and what's the downside and what's the upside of this doing such an ordinance for anything in the city? And I see this a lot of upside, I don't see a lot of downside if we do exercise this very judiciously. I'm going to go around the table again and you guys don't have to speak on the court, but anybody want to go first?
I can have it too, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
And so first, I really want to thank the community members who came out and spoke today. I know that's really challenging and it's really emotional. Thank you for coming and sharing your stories, that means a lot. So first, I just want to start by saying, obviously, we need to protect our communities and everybody deserves a safe placehold. And we have to, when discussing how we set policy around that, we also have to make sure that we're doing that in a way that's legal, enforceable, and also, you know, has some regard for process. So I think that's what we're discussing tonight, is how can we seek remedies that are things that we can do, that are enforceable at a city level and that make sense and that are equitable for everyone in all circumstances. For me, I also have what could be considered a nuisance home in my neighborhood, just across the street from me. But I'm lucky enough in my situation that I was able to talk to him. His name is Ron. And I was able to smell my concerns. I know that's not always possible for every family because of the sense of danger. I know that in my situation, I was able to find out that my neighbor has multiple diagnoses, that he is having a hard time making it. And that, you know, some of, it just really humanized him. Made me realize that this isn't a person I want displaced. Or that, you know, making him lose his home isn't going to make the situation any better. But I also recognize that we need to balance the needs of, you know, folks who have mental health issues or addiction issues with the needs of families in our communities. So if we do go forward with an ordinance, there's some things that I would like to make sure that we address them. Some of, so we are using kind of Medfords as a draft. Some of the concerns that I have about Medfords as a draft, so just kind of talking to staff. So it's just the definition of, and being very clear about them. Some of those are defined in the Medford ordinance as criminal activities. But what the Medford ordinance does is it changes the standard of evidence for criminal activities. So if I remember from my pre-law date, usually the standard of proof or the standard of evidence for criminal activity is beyond a reasonable doubt. This ordinance would call for changing the standard of evidence from beyond a reasonable doubt to, or I'm sorry, probable cause, which is beyond a reasonable doubt, my apologies. This would change the standard of evidence to a reasonable suspicion, which means more likely than not. And my questions about how we would implement something like that are who gets to decide what's more likely than not? And how, you know, how is that discretion applied? When we use a standard of evidence with probable cause, a judge gets to define. It's a neutral arbiter. And so that's one of my questions, is who's the decision maker? Is that the police, is that the city manager? Who is the person who decides whether or not it's more likely than not that a criminal activity is taking place? So again, this comes down to criteria. So how do we, definitions, how do we ensure that criteria are equitably applied? How do we make sure that, that there's those kind of things are part of that? Because I want to make sure that we're not setting the city up for, you know, what could potentially be discrimination based. I also want to make sure that when we set these definitions, that we also consider, when, well, I guess, coming back to the decision maker, who's the decision maker? That we also take factors into consideration. So for example, if there are nuisance complaints on a household for there's domestic violence, is, you know, evicting or displacing a victim of domestic violence actually helpful? You know, if there are children in the home, if there's, you know, a nuisance because there's drug issues or because there's abuse, how do we deal with that? Because if we do displace people from their homes, that doesn't create an environment that's good for those children or for those victims as well. So those are things I want to make sure that we consider in an ordinance as well. And that's basically what I want to say. Again, I think, as long as we address some of those concerns in an ordinance, I think it could be a very helpful tool for our community. But again, my major concern are balancing the needs of our communities and our neighborhoods and making sure that people feel safe in their communities. Also, with the needs and the several rights of people potentially applying to, potentially people losing their properties, losing their homes. So we really have to be judicious and have very solid criteria to apply so that discriminations does not occur. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Want to go up on a comment?
Yeah, a little bit. One, thanks for, thanks for coming and sharing this with us. I think, I'll make some general comments, but I look forward to getting the specifics of the future. You brought up some really valid points, I appreciate you wasting them. As far as I'm concerned, our primary task is the safety and wellbeing of our community. That's number one, absolutely, the safety and wellbeing. Whether it's, you know, physical safety, emotional safety, safety with wire, especially great documentary, I'm Clint. I mean, there's all kinds of, you know, concerns and we really need to, we need to be wary of those. It's a huge concern. Three, anything we can do to help them move forward, I think we have a, I feel we have a strong duty to do so. On that same thought though, it's a process and we need to be intentional about what we're doing. But I think we can expedite as much as is prudent to make sure we're setting a precedent for the future. But absolutely, we need some extra tools. I think we've lost the tools we have available at our disposal now. We need extra tools to help move forward with this. And we need to get the word out too. It's a big deal, we get the word out that this is not acceptable in Phoenix. Not to say they need to move somewhere else, but it's not acceptable.
Thank you.
Councilor Baker.
Sure, okay. I agree with that counselor, Shuck, that the number one priority in the city is the safety and wellbeing of citizens. That comes before everything. We got nothing else, but you got your health, you're okay, right? We got to make sure everybody's okay. I completely empathize with counselor Westover's points about property rights of the people who are committing the problems. I also recognize that in Oregon, we have a, there's a covenant, in fact, Counselor Shuck, but with your real estate history, I'd be able to extend on this. There's a right to quiet enjoyment when you buy property. There's expected, there's, you have a reasonable expectation of quiet enjoyment of that property. And if the kids can't play in the front yard, that's an infringement on their rights, on the children's rights.
Thank you.
And the fact that they lived less than a thousand, and there's all this going on, and the cops have been there zillions of times, but there, but at some point, they hit a wall. They can only do so much, and I get that. I don't want to see people be displaced either, but I don't want to see children be hurt either. I have a real issue with that, I do, and I know you do too. I know, I know, I'm not that at all. What I am saying is that this problem is just going to grow. I wouldn't say that I've got a nuisance neighbor, but I got a nuisance cul-de-sac, which is a grand part of my house. And in fact, my dog was walking, my wife was walking to the post office and a couple of dogs ran up on her and scared the snot out of her. That's a situation where if the police could have solved it long before it ever came to be a personal thing, then it would be a lot safer for everybody involved. The police, you know, they do a good job and unless they can, unless they bite their teeth, they'll win it. You know, and I really, I was the one that pointed that to them last, that turned them the last meeting saying we need to give them the tools. That was, that was, yeah, I really do see it just as a tool. I don't want to go out and just really, really give anybody the boot. I think that would be wrong. Now, that would be a violation of the right. But if they've been spoken to and warned and said, hey, you gotta, you gotta calm it down, you know, because people know. I mean, there's one script on paper that we can hold up and show, there's also, you know, you just know. And we need to take care of, obviously, it's not us doing it, it's our, it's our vital police force that does it. I think overwhelmingly that they are pretty lenient. You know, I think, you know, that they, you know, they give people the benefit of the doubt. Sometimes the benefit of the doubt has been taken away by their own actions. And that's nothing that anybody did to them, it's something they did to themselves through their own actions. And they need to be held responsible. If they're coming in at three thirty in the morning to rile people up, wake them out of bed, the kids can't go outside and play. My issue is if the kids can't go outside and play, I'm getting sideways. That's the law. And I mean, if we don't have a safe enough neighborhood, if this one home is endangering the neighborhood to the point where the kids couldn't go out in the front yard and play. What riled me last time was one of the gentlemen that came up, they were very good speakers. He said, why are you going to go outside? I don't know what that'd do to my neighborhood, right? Let's have the cops take care of it before it gets, and so I really believe that, you know, while I hate to see it ever exercised, I, you know, you know, the most powerful tools are often, you know, you hope you never use them. I would never want to have to go through anything like this, but we have to have it available. Or, or what we say to the perpetrator is an empty threat. Say to the victim is an empty promise.
Yep, that's right, thank you.
And we need to be solidified in that.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Mr. Snyder.
I sense the emotional and psychological trauma that's there. I understand that when there's no relief from that, it will get worse for you and for everyone else. I'm very sympathetic and empathetic to that, believe me. It's an unfortunate byproduct of civilization that we have to have rules because rules are created because somebody violates or does something that we don't like. And obviously, there's things we don't like. So therefore, we're going to have to, the wisdom is how good are those rules? Make them legal according to the constitution and everything else, and still be fair to you folk. And I don't know where that line is, but our staff is going to have to figure that out.
Thank you.
Well, of course. You're told, Metford has an example, and it's quite long with a lot of different things in it. And there's probably ninety-five percent of it that was good, there's probably five percent that really needs to be thought through. Should it be there, or should it be different, or should it not be there? It does talk about nuisance property, and it defines it as events over some unit, that are short units, longer units, and longer units. Well, that's kind of an approach, the real question is times and how many events. It also talks about nuisance activities that quote state law, which is good because that's been decided by a lot of people. And talks about Metford municipal code. But I don't know, it's how that code compares to what we, are we missing things? Are they doing things right or wrong that we need to incorporate? But it looks like there's a lot of municipal code work that's going to have to be thought through about what we actually not want in these. I think that's part of it. There's another part in here that talks about, if you close and secure it, it's all access. So I figure it's taking possession of them. In Metford, they talk about for a period of not less than six months, no more than one year. I don't know what's magic about those kinds of numbers, whether or not, there should be a not less than, not greater than. But you have to think through the wisdom of what kind of numbers, or whether it's just one standard, I don't know what it is. They also raised the question to me of how do you get a property back? And what do you do with the property while you have it? Because I know it's in some properties, if you don't, if you seize it and you don't keep the water on, for example, which somebody has to pay for, the water will die. And that becomes a detriment to the property being resold or returned or backed over. But I think there's some other processes that have to be thought through, not just taking possession, but what do you do with it when you have it? And how do you get rid of it at the end of it? And what are the criteria for that? So I just asked you to look through Metford and any of the examples you have, compile things that actually make sense, and challenge any number that's in there, just to make sure it's about the good number. I have a better number to come up with. So that's my map. And thank you again for coming, and I did see you on TV. You were very eloquent.
I sent a consensus to move forward with having staff come up with an ordinance that meets some of the criteria that we spoke about, the help words we were spoken about. But just for Sue and Tim and the others, I'm just wondering when's it going to happen, what's going to happen, right?
Yeah, we have to start at zero.
Yeah, we have to start at zero.
So ordinance, uh, World Creek has an ordinance, I spoke to Mayor Obern, Oberherr, and I think they used their ordinance once. Um, so I gotta ask staff and more specifically, I don't wanna quit on this spot, but, and we have some templates out there, but how long do you think before you can come back to city council with a template that you know, has the nuances that we spoke about?
Well, I'll, uh, we, we have another meeting here in two weeks, I'll start working on it, see how, how much I can get done.
I think it's a thirty day, that'd be great, I have a lot of work there.
Well, I'll, I'll.
Two, two weeks. I'm trying to think, just, I've been, I'm not gonna be here in a month. So I'm not gonna just as long as we have something to contemplate and mull over and open up for council discussion, that'd be great.
Well, I would, uh, I agree with, with, uh, Counselor Snyder that you, once you have a template, it's, it's, it's what you remove a lot of times, although there's, you know, you always think it's gonna take a lot less time, it always, I should always times by three, but I'll work on it, I've got, no, I've got, I've got this in front of me now and I've got some other ones that I would like to work on too, so let's see, give it a chance, you wanna say something?
I'll, I'll discuss the topic, okay, that's great, yeah.
Thank you.
So I definitely wanna, you know,
Thank you.
You know, I wish we could snap our fingers and run away, but we can't, you know, so we're trying to do the best that we can, you know, legally with strains and processes that we have to go through, we'll be here yet, we're working on it.
We do appreciate it. We just know that we have to start at zero, once this gets passed, we're already at sixty calls, so we gotta start all over again, so we appreciate you to help us.
Your social media ideas aren't a bad idea. A lot of videos and all those, I make a difference, right?
Can I just say thank you, well, again, or all, again, for coming and sharing your stories, um, it's really powerful and meaningful and, um, encourage you to stay in contact with the police department, as I'm sure you've had them, so.
Well, and we didn't take it lightly because we care about the city and we don't wanna damage the city, we brought it to you guys because we know that that's the best place to start is with you guys, we don't wanna go out and be bashing or threatening or any of that stuff and putting up all this social media stuff, we wanna do it the right way, we believe in the city of Phoenix and we appreciate you listening to us. I'm sorry, because I am extremely emotional about it, um, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping that maybe you'll keep this in the loop a little bit, uh, 'cause I, you know, emailed Dave and with my concerns, is that?
Well, the, the, the agendas are posted.
Okay.
Like every Wednesday, Thursday, before, every two weeks, or, I don't know, every, uh, first and third Monday, typically, we're gonna have a meeting, that's the holiday. So make the website, check the agenda, it'll be, you know, on, on, it's a little like that.
Perfect.
We'll welcome to attend.
Okay, thank you guys for everything.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for believing in us.
Thank you. Oh, we do, yeah, and the police department, they've been amazing. They're just up against career criminals, so, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
It's a lot that I don't have, guys.
Is that it?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty good.
Yeah, this is like my college degree. I know, I'm sorry, this is really cool.
I see you.
Oh, is it that?
Okay. Well, we're gonna wait, they're out. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna and we've got, we've got, we're gonna do staff reports and so, yeah, anything that you wanna add, just like, we're already done?
No.
Okay, works out for you?
Yeah, please. Okay. My, my. Uh, I just wanted to say we distributed information packets to you tonight for to review. Uh, obviously, we haven't gotten these packets to Stuart and Cindy. What I'm looking at right now, first of all, I guess, uh, even though we still have one council who hasn't responded to my doodle poll, it's obvious that there is no night of those four nights when all of you can attend, and this really is a decision that needs to be made by all seven members. And so, what I'm probably gonna do, I, I don't like doing it this way, but we can't delay this process. I will, I will pick a night when we can have it be six of you, and then meet one-on-one with the one person who can't make it, uh, to get their input and hopefully, that person will trust me to convey their input to the rest of the council. So it'll, it'll probably be, uh, the tenth or the eleventh of April, that executive session scheduled for five-thirty, because I don't think it'll take us more than half an hour to get that done, so we can edit it out real quick. And, um, hopefully, we can, uh, get the interviews set up, get this process rolling.
The tenth or eleventh of five-thirty?
Yes.
The tenth or eleventh of?
We can set up.
Tuesday.
Tuesday and Wednesday.
I had a request, uh, from some of the timber counters to give them the list of business licenses that we have here in the city. I don't think it's public information, but in their experience, is it okay for us to give a list of business license holders? And, uh,
oh, record, uh, we do have rights in charge of copying costs. I don't know if we have that list electronic.
So somebody knows.
I haven't, I hadn't used it recently, so I'll take its clippings, just should email out.
Well, yeah, well, okay, thanks, that helps. Counselor comments. Senator Baker, you wanna start?
Sure. I took the pleasure of visiting city council meetings, sides of the room, and, uh, other meetings, and I just wanna commend person on this council individually. You guys are awesome. On our worst day. Nice, nice. You guys rock.
That's nice of you to say.
Well, they get down, they're spoken up, they're down, Mike.
That's really good, thanks.
Yeah, seriously, I mean, we, it's so important that, you know, that even though we have different, those are forty points, and we're all coming from a different place, we're just leaving on the table here, right, it's like, it's not personal, it's just professional, it's be cool. Be nice, Tommy, Tommy kindergarten, man, be nice. Why, you're gonna get on fire, you know?
You're on the job, man, great point.
Counselor Shump. Um,
Want to go back to?
No, I think I got it, I was second going to, one, I wanted to give a big shout out of the Parks and Greenway, uh, the egg hunt was a lot of fun on Saturday, you did a great job announcing, by the way, Mr. Mayor.
That's a win.
Nice work there. Uh, it was super smooth, it was amazingly well organized, uh, kids were, the first kid that came up to grab a, like, five to six baskets, because he got literally like shaking with excitement, right, it was like a super heartwarming thing to see. Um, one note, two families did come in at like eleven oh nine, and I just wanna put it out there, the community can't show up late for a new street. It starts at eleven and it's over eleven oh two, that's it. I felt really bad, but you can't, there's a few things in life you can't be late to, one of them's an egg hunt. To Dave, checking schedule if I, on the tenth, okay? Um, my twelve-year-old will have to suck it up, that if I have to pull him out of his event early to work on your stuff, I should be able to be here by five-thirty on the tenth, okay? Okay, you're gonna have to wait on this, so, it sounds really cool, my twelve-year-old.
I'm just kidding.
I've almost had people, and I can do that.
Does he, eleven-fourth, do he well, or just the tenth?
Just the tenth.
And then you have to heartbreak a child?
Not heartbreak, but, I mean, how much should we sacrifice for them anyways? You know what I mean, he's a president of the sixth, so. They don't say it that way, but especially when you're getting out, you know, they have a building to bridge and get over, so. We'll s, we'll say, if you do like a nice layer with some of the boss thing on it. You wanna be, you know, happy, there. Little chop, man, no bracket, you just, you know, there's a, this is still a thing, you know.
You can, Counselor Snyder.
Well, I've had a kind of relaxing week in the other Phoenix, in Oregon, not here, not in Arizona. Um, I was surprised about how many times we went to a restaurant or a shop and somebody said, oh, where are you from? And I said, Phoenix, Oregon. How many people that live in Phoenix, Arizona, actually know where Medford is and Ashland and where the city is, or?
Your mom would like.
Yeah, a lot of them actually lived here one time and moved down there, or they have friends and relatives who they visited on Interstate five. So we're not as isolated as you might think here. Great.
I knew the opposite, why would you move down?
I don't know, but I saw your last name someplace down there on the street side.
Yeah, yeah, there may be a few of us down there.
Yeah.
Those are people.
It, it depends, there's two sides of the family.
Just quickly, the CPAC meeting is happening on, uh, next Monday at three P M. We're just discussing, we finally have quorum, so we are finally, um, just going to talk a little bit about uh, our current economic needs analysis and kind of doing a little bit of goal setting, using the current, uh, the current analysis. Um, I think that is
Nice job, my guys, I think the audience can probably, we handle ourselves, we did a good job, it was tight, carried out man quickly. Nice.
Yeah, we worked together on the side, you.
Yeah, we're doing better. We're, uh, that said, we're going to, I don't know, maybe, but you're much.
I got it, yeah. Kind of, this is oh, you missed your call, maybe you shouldn't have thought about it. Yeah. I think you guys raised people.
I mean, good night.
Captain, my mom.
Captain.
Was that, was that Aiden? Yeah, it almost made me cry.
It did.